Okay, it looks like it's 5:30, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting order. It's nice to have everybody back together again. But I just would ask everyone that we're going to do the best we can to practice social distancing. So help me in the long term if we can. I don't think I have anything else, so we'll just go ahead and get started. We'll begin with the invocation with Andrew, would you be so kind?
So I would love to ask you for your guidance and wisdom as we make decisions to try to impact our city and our community and the people that live and visit our city for years to come tonight. And your guidance and wisdom, amen.
... of the United States of America, differing but with which it stands, one nation under God, in the middle with liberty and justice for all.
Local. Here. 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 There. Here. 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 By May, I'd like to remind our council people, make sure that you turn the microphones on when you speak and talk into the microphone so that everybody can hear. Whether it be around this table or out in the audience, I appreciate that. I have Alexa helping me out. She's going to holler at us if we want to turn them on. So if that doesn't work, if you just want to turn them on remotely, that's fine as well. If you address that and watch, we'll probably play. Okay, so if you don't mind, some of you are going to see some new faces tonight, so I would like to go over the meeting procedures. The public may address a specific item, agenda items at the pleasure of the mayor recognized by the mayor. Please state your name and address and leave your remarks for three minutes. I know some of those things would be a little difficult tonight, so we'll do the best we can. Out of respect to the city employees, we request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city minister or mayor. An individual in violation will be cleared out of order. A copy of our Open Meetings Act in Nebraska is posted on the wall at the back of the council chambers and conference room. If you didn't get a copy of the agenda tonight, there should be some back here in the corner. If you'd like to grab one, we're sure we bought one to do so. We're going to start tonight before we actually get to our agenda. Gary's going to talk to us, or somebody's going to talk to us. I'm not sure who's going to talk to us, but we'll start with that. If you'd be so kind, tell us who you are. It might be quiet, she's probably able to hear you.
Am I on?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, indeed.
All right. Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to join you. My name is Ashley Rice Skirlock. I work for the Nebraska Department of Economic Development. And I serve Lincoln County as part of my 17-county region that mostly encompasses southwest Nebraska. And I'm here tonight to honor the city of North Platte as a continued member in Nebraska's Economic Development Certified Community Program. About 15 years ago, DED and the Nebraska Diplomats partnered to create the EDCC program. The program recognizes communities and their leaders for ongoing excellence who are strategically prepared for business recruitment opportunities, promote sustainability through business expansion projects, and create local, regional, and state partnerships to create economic development. North Platte was among Nebraska's first EDCC members. Since the city's original designation in 2005, local leaders have set the bar high for the program. Your community's involvement continues to serve as a great example for other EDCC members, which now has grown to over 40 communities. Your work over the past five years alone has inspired a number of other communities to look at downtown revitalization projects as well as commercial opportunities. In addition, North Platte's strong relationships with some of the largest employers continues to grow and have resulted in expanded services at Great Plains Health. Partnerships are also growing with Union Pacific Railroad on plans for a new railroad railpark. DED has especially appreciated the opportunity to work with you on North Platte's shot-in-the-arm Base Two Housing Program through Nebraska's Rural Workforce Housing Fund. Local leaders' efforts to assist businesses through North Platte's Quality Growth Fund during the pandemic are notable and very much appreciated. Nebraska's EDCC program recognizes a community's strategic success in preparing for new business opportunities as well as the ability to retain and expand businesses for those who are already investing in the state of Nebraska. Over the past five years alone, North Platte has established 121 businesses and almost 900 new jobs. Many of our state's programs are designed to enhance partnerships between our local, regional, and state leaders. These partnerships serve as a benchmark of growth in every corner of our state, and North Platte shares a great team of leaders who continue to promote business and community development. On behalf of the Nebraska Department of Economic Development, Nebraska Diplomats, and the EDCC program, I'm honored to present the city of North Platte with its most recent Economic Development Certified Community Recertification. Congratulations.
Thank you, Angela.
I don't think I've had to do it for three days. Yeah, so thank you for having me. And now if I could get a photo opportunity, please, for the occasion. If you could maybe, the mayor and, yes, if you would join us. Right for some good lighting. Yeah. Yeah. Right there. Yes. Oh, like my first day traveling before, just go, I, but I felt like I was a little bit small.
All right, well, we'll go ahead and start with the consent agenda. All matters under consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any city councilman may, however, remove an item from consent by request. Item number one is approved minutes of June 16th, 2020. Item number two, place on file MLW reports for May 2020. Item number three, place on file treasurer's report for May 2020. Item number four, adopt a recommendation by the North Platte Mining Commission for a Osmer first replat located at 614 North Madison Avenue and 1503 West Sixth Street. And item number five is approved Wild Bill's looms and bowling application for addition to the liquor license at 1100 South Jefferson Street. And item number six, approved request to discharge fireworks on July 11th, 2020 for the Platte River cruise night.
We've provided one through six tickets on the agenda. All right.
That motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Regular agenda. Item, well, item number seven is a closed session to discuss personnel or potential litigation. So I apologize, it shouldn't take very long. So if we could clear the room for just a few minutes, and we'll get you back in as quickly as we can. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, we need a motion to do that, first of all. You might wait a minute, they may say no.
I'll take a motion. You have to say the whole thing.
Are you taking a vote on it?
To discuss personnel. Say it.
Are you taking a vote on it, or is that it?
No. I'm getting a little bit of candid photo.
You broke it anyway. We still have a few people in need of it. All right, success, motion passes, thank you.
And three, oh.
And you know, you guys have served North Platte really, really well for bringing the, bringing the money home to help us have enough money in our budget every single year. So, you know, one year you need us to help you out to get you back by. I'm glad that we can kind of help out back.
Item number nine, public hearing action to approve LB eight four zero, annual quality growth fund report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Gary Pearson, President of North Platte Chamber Development Corporation, Title II South Dewey, here in North Platte. I appreciate the city allowing us to do this at a regular meeting. I think it's important fact we have potential quality growth fund vote coming up this November. Kind of give you an overview of the entire program. And then also knowing that we have some new city officials to give like some background and, and then the other situation with this being broadcast gives us an opportunity to reach out to the general public as well to help them understand. So what I'm going to cover in the PowerPoint presentation, I'll try to be, I know you've got a long agenda, so I'd actually be very respectful of your time. And then answer questions at the end of the PowerPoint. But it should help cover your next four agenda items. So there might be a couple of small items we'll want to address with the council on each one of those as well. But kind of a key quote that kind of summarizes what we're talking about tonight. And this comes from the CEO and Executive Director at the US Conference of Mayors, Tom Cochran. Mayors and business leaders agree that creating public-private partnerships, a major force in shaping cities of the 21st century. The experience has shown that when businesses and local governments work together, our cities benefit, our nation is stronger. And I think that definitely says a whole statement about what's been created here in North Platte. Partnership between the private sector, business community and the city of North Platte, as well as Lincoln County. Certainly, the quality growth fund is a major catalyst in helping us recruit and retain business and industry and jobs in the community. So to get everybody familiarized with the background of this, this was all an outgrowth of the Local Option Municipal Economic Development Act. It was introduced through the legislating bill eight forty back in 1991. Many communities today still refer to it as LB eight forty funds. And that's the legal terminology, but it's always been known in North Platte as a quality growth fund. That it authorized incorporated cities and villages to collect and appropriate, and appropriate local tax dollars, including sales and or property tax if approved by the local voters for economic development purposes. The state statutes that were created by LB eight forty have qualified several times since. And lay out the guidelines of how these programs should be administered in local communities. A plan is formulated on local level, again, following state guidelines, but you can mold that plan to your own priorities. The collection expenditure of tax revenues are defined on the ballot, so the voting public knows exactly what they're voting on. And because the law was created, the way that it was, you had to vote on both the plan and the tax separately on the ballot. Maximum timeline is 10 years, which brings us to this discussion tonight. Last time this went before the voters was in 2010, when they authorized for 2011 through 21 expires in March this year. And the council sets the date of renewal election, which is on the agenda tonight for you to consider. This is first adopted in North Platte in, it was done at a special election in February 2001. You see in favor 2136, opposed were 617, carried overwhelmingly. When it was put up for renewal to the North Platte voters in November of 2010, obviously the general election where you're going to draw far more voters. It was a two to one margin there as well, 4011 to 2040. So there's always been really good support from the citizens of North Platte to support this fund. And for election again in November 2020, because we know that it's going to expire in March, we want that continuity to continue carrying over for 2021, 2031. We all, we realize this isn't the ideal year, it's just the way that the timing is working out. So our Chamber Development Corporation has pledged to help promote this, market this to the voters. And pledge private sector money in order to do that. We'll do as many of the presentations to civic groups and any community group that apply to here as much as we can. In Nebraska, there are 72 communities with a voter-approved LB eight forty program. Seventy-one of those 72 responded through some type of local sales or a mixture of general fund revenue tax. It's kind of, if you come from like Keno or sales tax or, or any kind of user taxes that go into that. One community, that being Fremont, actually has it on property tax. But as we all know, that's not a popular thing, we want to make sure the public understands here, this is only about sales tax growth. It's nothing to do with property tax. It's highly recognized economic development tool and one of the first questions a business prospect will ask a community in seeking information. They'll want to know what type of local and city programs we have that matches up with the state and city programs. The LB eight forty requires a citizens review committee appointed by the mayor, ratified by the city council, as well as an appointed administrator. The five members that we have on the committee, two of which are here this evening, Bob Ferris, Pat Keenan, Kids Dager, Brock World, Josh Harm. You have two very experienced businessmen, former mayor, University of Nebraska region on there. And you have two experienced bankers and you have an attorney who is also a former Chamber Development Board Chairman. And Josh Harm is actually our Chamber Development Board Representative, which the plan also mandates that there will be a representative of our organization on that committee. Administrator, since the beginning of this program, has always been the president of the North Platte Area Chamber of Development. And the financials are always handled by the city of North Platte's Finance Director, as Don always says, a fabulous job to bat, it's opening up a finally manner. The council, just as you did tonight, you accept recommendations from the committee, all the public meeting to make their final decision. And at that meeting, you can either accept, amend, or reject the recommendation actually to citizens review committee. As you probably noticed, it's nine minutes from the last citizens review committee, they thoroughly vetted out this past project as well as all the ones previously. Fund can be used for a variety of projects, and quality job creation projects could include loans, grants, performance-based loans, infrastructure projects, studies, consultants that are needed on different projects, workforce housing, marketing promotion, job training, real estate acquisition, equipment, and other eligible uses as defined in the plan, the state statute. City when it first adopted this program incorporated the language that the state statutes are changed. While this is in process for 10 years, that automatically gets incorporated into our plan, this is eligible thing to have occurred. When we get applications, we, as a staff, thoroughly vet through that with the applicant. A lot of times people will come in having heard about the fund. They have this grand illusion, you can get a grant to go into business, and there's a lot more to it. We put them through a business planning process, they have a credit to present to the committee, they would set up a meeting with the committee. It's a public meeting, legally advertised, and we buy the media to all the meetings. And then the review committee goes through it, sometimes they'll send the project back to the drawing board. Sometimes they'll modify what the request is. And then at that point, we bring it to the city council, and we know it's a finalized version of what's been a well thought out project.
Sure.
Gary, question. I believe you said initially when this was adopted, that we adopted the, if the state statute changes, that's automatically changed in our
Can you get closer to your muzzle? But I can't, he's not close enough.
Gary, I think you said earlier that when we adopted this initially, that if the state statute changed, our statute would automatically be changed to reflect the change in state statute. Is that going to be incorporated in the new language that we vote on?
It is. We'll, we'll go over that tonight in a public hearing as well. But it, it's a good practice to have, and it's something almost every community does. Because over a length of 10 years of time, things change and legislating things get brought forward. Workforce housing is a prime example of that, retail is a prime example of that. When this was first introduced back in 1991, a lot of those things were not incorporated into it. Over time, they found that as communities have struggled to make community and economic development happen, some of those key elements needed to be incorporated into it because what was included in some of the smaller communities wasn't necessarily important to the larger community. So it's, it's, it's a good practice to, to have in place.
So if we didn't have that in our statute, then we couldn't make any changes to that until we either have a special election to change it or wait until the next election or came off the ballot.
That is correct.
Okay.
So North Platte is unique in, in the way it allocates the funds, it is based on sales tax growth. It allows for no more than $650,000 annually. So it doesn't encumber existing sales tax that you have that allocated to other things. But as the community grows, we continue to move economic community development forward. You have that growth occurring when it passes a threshold, which you'll see in the plan later tonight. When it passes that threshold on sales tax revenue generated, that particular year, plus a 2% growth factor in it, then that is split 50/50 with the city on the additional funding that goes into it. And then it caps at 650, and then the city would get all the rest of your general fund. But going back, you can see the years 2011 through 2020, what it generated. That averaged 538,000, rather than 650,000 over that timeline. And it only maxed out for different times in those, those 10 years. If you go back to its original inception, it never started accumulating, even though it was adopted in 2001, it never started accumulating funds until 2003. And as you can see in the bar chart, those funds were, started to grow, but then you saw the community become a little more aggressive at community and economic development, which then generated more sales tax growth. And therefore, you know, the program kind of fueled itself after a while. If you go back to those first initial years, 2001 through 11, the annual average was only 232,707. And that's, we said, the last 10 years has been 538,000. Since that time that those projects have come forward since 2004, went back and figured out all the different programs, the businesses that either had direct or indirect impact from this program. There are 449 businesses we've identified in North Platte that have benefited from this program. I think that's a little known fact, and that was another reason I wanted to make sure that we were able to tell the big picture, rather than just throwing a bunch of statistics out without explaining it. You break that down by business impact, there were 31 applications that added direct benefit. Then there was infrastructure put in, in the Twin Rivers Business Park, which is owned by the Chamber Development Corporation. An additional in, in infrastructure that expanded the city industrial park, which is along with Philip Avenue. There are five businesses in the Twin Rivers Business Park, and 19 in the city industrial park. Our Shot in the Arm program, which Phase One and Phase Two, 82 local businesses were impacted to some degree by the construction that occurred on those. In the recent programs that we just went before the council earlier this year, response to COVID, with the technical assistance grants, the business boost gift card programs, 86 businesses benefited from the technical assistance grant, 140 from the, the business boost gift card. And that was the really small businesses in town, that didn't necessarily qualify for the payroll protection plan. So it really did serve a valuable purpose, and we can relay all those comments we got of appreciation when they came in to pick up their check. I'm glad it was very, very gratifying the past long time you were there. We really appreciate what the city did for them. The downtown facade program that was approved earlier, that's helping kind of the, the business community as you're doing all the improvement downtown. They can restore the facades or put new facades on. There are 72 eligible businesses in that district that could and can take advantage of that program. And then through our work at P, where we had a program that helped some of our businesses recruit some professionals into the community. We've had 15 different businesses, that was positively, positively impacted from that. If you look at the big picture in the community, what's happened in the last 10 years, not just quality growth fund related, but in all building activity, building permit values in the city of North Platte. Since 2010, there's been $358 million of new projects created in this community. And amazingly, 50, there have been over 50 projects that $500,000 are created. So that shows kind of a wide effort by the community. It wasn't just one huge project that happened in the community, it was kind of an effort by a lot of businesses leaving in North Platte's future, doing new projects here, putting new investments here. You can see the breakdown each one of those years. If you want to compare what North Platte is doing to our peers when it comes to their version of the quality growth fund or the LB eight forty one fund, I contacted each one of these communities, I went to their plans and pulled out this information. Scotts Club hearing funds theirs to, of our parent communities to the greatest degree at 14. 1,415,000 a year. A quarter cent of that comes from the city of Scotts Club, which is right now is 1.1 million a year. And then hearing has a half cent that right now is 300,000. But being twin cities are kind of like one community. Then Fremont has a 1/6 cent. And in Grand Island, all of their sources are from the general fund, if you come from any, any source. It's set at $750,000 a year. Of course, in North Platte, maximum 650, what it actually was the last 10 years. Then Columbus and Norfolk, Columbus has the sales tax, Norfolk has the property tax. I think I misspoke earlier when I said it was Fremont, this Norfolk that has the only one in the, in the state that has actually property tax that funds this program. And you can see what their 10-year commitments are to this program.
Gary, just, I've heard this across the state, we're one of the very few communities that sales tax has to grow before this bucket starts to fill. And I think that's a really important point on this, but is that
My knowledge is the iron one, like that. Most communities have a defined, like a quarter or six cent that it changes every year. Others take an exact dollar amount and carve it out and just says, that's always going to be there for it. North Platte is unique, but obviously it's something that the public has bought into. It said, you know, we realize those resources that are, were depended on for other city services aren't going to go away. And there's a little bit of motivation to grow our communities as a result. But if we didn't have this one, I could tell you, we would be very competitive when it comes to some of the major projects that we're trying to go after for the community. Current balance was 2.1 million prior to your action tonight, so that's reduced by 350,000 with the allocation in the Rascal Andes organization. And there's still 588,000 set aside for small business loans. And now there will be a little over 2 million set aside for the funding commitments. Funding commitments are sometimes performance-based or in like Nebraska Andes situation. It's on an urgency as needed basis, you know, so you keep the thing going. So it's a, it's a good way to also do that. The original vote, North Platte, the fund, LB eight forty existed since 1991. Our Platte was one of the communities that came in later in the process, not till 2001 to actually take it to the vote of the people. And I, and that was largely motivated by the experience, I think, this community went through with recruiting a Walmart distribution center. But she didn't have that big pot there, and so a lot of other creative things had to be done to get, to get Walmart here. But it also may help the community understand why you need that economic development fund that works just to help you compete for these kinds of projects and have a business park that's shovel-ready. You don't have a business, if you only have a cornfield out there and you don't have infrastructure in place, you don't have sewer water streets, all that there, they won't even talk to you. And usually you will get, we'll get proposals that you have to respond less than a week to try to be competitive. And then they narrow those down and then you compete from there. I shared one with Matt this week that we got on somebody looking for a rail park. And it, obviously you needed a shovel-ready rail park to be able to compete for that. This is our Twin Rivers Business Park, where it's a neighbor to Walmart Distribution Center where Cavellis, Bass Pro Call Center is, the FedEx operation, and the latest development there with Chief Industries and Reteria Ventures. You can see photos of those things that are out there right now, the Iron Trail Warehouse District. And that's what that would look like when it's completed. And additional infrastructure is now under the way, and I believe Brandon's helped to help to get that in place. And then the city business park, which was established prior to quality growth fund, but was able to expand with additional infrastructure as a result of that. Today, there are 19 business operations there, and those are the list of those businesses or operations. Other key projects that have come along, the downtown revitalization project, which you recently approved as part of an overall $4 million upgrade to downtown, the facade restoration, shot in arm, Phase One, Phase Two, where we had 48 new housing units built, Phase One. We could have up to 150 housing units as part of Phase Two, which will be a combination of single-family townhome and multi-unions. The work in via city recruitment program, and then of course, our effort to try to get some additional retail back to the community with the Buxton Retail Analytics contract that we signed, that the city helps support new quality growth fund. And I think we're making some progress, we got a little bit of a setback with COVID. But I think we got some things materializing that a year from now, we can stand up and, and help purchase them. Here's just a glance to some of the projects that were able to be completed as a result of quality growth fund. This is one of our, this is our first recipient in the work at P, a local attorney in town that was able to just help motivate her to take the job in North Platte. And you can see the shot in the arm, and of course, her shields and all the nice improvements they've done for that downtown project, the removal of the old dunnings. These are the 82 local businesses that were involved in the shot in the arm housing projects. And I think that list will grow to over 100 by the time we get through Phase Two. It really did spread the impact of what was going on. Other direct incentive projects, most of these are listed on your financials that we give you each time we have a project come forward. I just put it on here so you can see some of the ones that got some of the direct incentive out of the various projects. And pictures of some of the other quality growth funds. The SBA Technical Assistance, as we said, 86 businesses and 140 businesses in that gift card boost program. And that really was spread out among a lot of different businesses. So part of this is to give you an annual report, not only just the overall view of what quality growth fund means to this community, but this is really an 18-month snapshot. We delayed the annual report for those reasons I spoke to earlier, and to give the new city officials an opportunity to hear it as well as springboard it into the renewal of the election. And of course, we had the COVID situation, which didn't help having public meetings to be able to explain a lot of things. So these are the programs that have been approved that impacted funding in 2019 to 2020. As you can see, they've been pretty ambitious in getting this program at work for the community over the last 18 months. But a pretty impressive list of projects is going to have some long-term benefits for the community. And then looking forward, one of the key things you helped do is get our studies underway for the rail park, where we now have a land agreement in place. And we have those studies now moving forward, and 2020 is going to be largely about getting all that planning done. And then the master planning continuing into 2021, we can actively start promoting, marketing it as well as kind of tee it up for infrastructure to eventually get in place. And quality growth fund, we hope will be, have a major impact on this as well, will certainly help recruit some of those payrolls in here and some of those key businesses. So that will be one of the keys to moving forward. And then if you're asking what other kinds of things we have in mind that the fund can help for, the five-year strategic plan we put into place, which is part of the recertification process that the city was awarded tonight. But a lot of energy and effort from a lot of our communities, a lot of talent we have on our board and our economic development committee and our business community help put this strategic plan together for growth strategies, some things we could do to enhance quality of life, place-making in the community, business development, revitalization, and just some internal goals we have as a chamber. So I think it's, it's, it's really a good roadmap for us to follow. We keep coming back to, and have performance standards on, why are we making progress? What are we doing, maybe not? And people ask you what you're doing, we got something we can show them and explain to them what we do. And I could go into a little more detail on these things during your budget workshops when it comes to the annual report at that time. And the final thing is, on the agenda tonight, we'll ask you to, once again, allow the voters to decide on this issue. That's what you're deciding is, you're, what we're asking you to do is just give the voters, the citizens, the opportunity to vote on this and to keep our program and our funding in place, so that we can be competitive as a community when it comes to economic development.
Question? Good job, Gary. I have another couple of questions here, Gary. In the very beginning of that, a page for, it says, financial incentives may be reviewed for infrastructure improvements and other projects. What does that mean, infrastructure and other projects?
The
Is that for the
This is part of infrastructure, Twin Rivers Business Park, that would enhance bringing development projects in. So pay for some of the sewer and water and the street extensions, perhaps a purchase of the property. Twin Rivers Business Park and the city industrial park are prime examples. You get those kinds of things in place, look what occurs. If you don't have that ready to go shovel-ready business park site, you're frustrating business and you don't have a good, it's good a chance to land that business at a critical time. Chief Industries is a perfect example, Cavellis is another example of what the community did. It made a good, it made it ideal for FedEx to be able to
So does that help offset some of the city's costs or the
That is correct.
Okay.
Well, sometimes it would fall on the private developer, but sometimes it falls on the city. Now, cities did do some of this previously, especially when they didn't have this type of a fund or they didn't use tax-related financing that also helps pay for some of their infrastructure costs. It would have to come from general fund allocations, which then goes right back to the tax.
And a good example on that infrastructure item would be when the city money was used to help that curb cut over on Newbury and where Love says, if you're playing the water issues they were having, basically, it wasn't a huge amount of money, but it was infrastructure-related, but it was something that normally private development, but it, it helped get Loves in, helped get inland trucks facility in, and helped the truck wash his access from blocking up that. So that was a pretty good example of one that hit that infrastructure point that felt of quality growth versus the city having to pull it out of our budget or tax it back to those developers.
Yeah, okay. And then under program intent, it says to encourage the attraction of new business and industries to the region. Maybe it's a stickler item, but to me, I think industry is probably the most important thing we need to work on bringing to our community. And I'm not going to ask you to change that, but it would make more sense to me to have that first because when I look at where we are right now as a community, we need good paying jobs. That, that's a priority in my opinion. And I just wanted to bring that up, and I think that you and I talked about that, and you know that that is a priority for you, and I appreciate that. I, I think the emphasis really does need to be on industry.
Yep. And that's why it's always nice to have some funds in the fund accumulate, so when you have a chance to land one of those big fish. So when you have a chance to land one of those big fish, you know, in the pond, that we have that opportunity to do that. So couldn't agree with you more, Ed. A lot of the language in here follows what the state statute tells.
Well, I think it's kind of points out to me that we have to really be cautious about how we allocate this Quality Growth Fund so that, as you say, the big fish comes, we go to the middle bucket and there's no minnows. I mean, we've got to be able to help these people out when that big fish comes that we have money available that we can't use to incentivize them to come to our town.
It was pretty eye-opening when the community was working on the bid for the veterans home in Carney, that's now in Carney. Because I saw the community in North Platte scrap, scrape together every resource they had to make the most competitive offer because of the number of high-quality jobs associated with that project. And we did very good and it was a very admirable proposal, but we didn't have enough money. And I know there are probably other reasons they want to relocate to Carney anyway, but we didn't, we didn't have enough chips to play at that table at that point in time. It was pretty eye-opening.
Thanks, Gary. Thanks, Gary.
After that, we approve the LV eight forty annual Quality Growth Fund report.
Item number ten, Public Hearing for Approval for the Proposed Economic Development Plan of twenty twenty-one through twenty thirty-one with successive modifications.
I was looking at, let me find the page now where I was at, sorry. One of the circle, I circled one thing in here. So we talked about where some of the other community are in terms of how many dollars they throw into the program that we hit. Four out of, I mean, the last couple of years, we didn't quite hit that six hundred and fifty thousand dollar cap. But with inflation probably seemingly going up over the next decade, I was kind of curious why they decided to stay at that six hundred and fifty thousand dollar cap limit.
Want to increase it with fiber then?
I mean, I mean, you're talking about only excess growth over the top. So, but with, you're going to be thinking that inflation is going to continue this spiral probably in the next decade that, you know, you don't want to cap ourselves too low on this either. And then you, again, still don't have enough dollars in the board to have to play with. Especially when you talk about some of the peer communities around you playing with a lot more, I guess. I don't know. They're playing with a full board and we're playing, you know, we don't want to be playing with a, missing a left arm or something.
Well, you know, that, that's at the discretion of the city because these are city funds. You know what your, your funds are. We, we certainly didn't want to present something that, but get things off on the wrong foot to start with. And so that's a decision totally at your discretion. I, I could tell you if we kept close to that six hundred and fifty thousand each year, I think it'll, it'll help us stay competitive. You know, any economic development professional is going to tell you, if that gives us all the money, you can, you know.
Sure.
It allows us to.
But we had a discussion just had when talking about this.
I think it's a reasonable thing. And especially, I think one thing that, in the discussions that occurred, we were very cognizant of what the communities went through this year of COVID nineteen, the business shutdowns and so forth. So we didn't want to get selfish. And we want to be respectful of what people have gone through, yet be convincing enough to allow us to still have this tool in our toolbox to use. Because I'm telling you, if we don't, then, then it's really.
What do you mean, you didn't want to be selfish, I guess? I'm confused by that because it's not going to impact the business more than that they pay the same sales tax regardless.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I, I guess I'm just.
More from a perception standpoint.
Okay. Did you guys talk about this at least, like, is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know, cap enough? Is that, you guys talked about? What would be, you know, competitive over the next ten years? I don't want to just look at this, well, we have one really bad year here with COVID and now we're hesitant, you know, but maybe we should have looked, you know, that we look back five years, maybe we should have done a little bit more so we have more, you know, I mean, I don't know. I was curious if you guys.
You know, Andrew, just a comment that I can share on that because it's, I was thinking a lot about that issue too because we had hit that a few times within the last few years. The thing that I'm concerned about is I talk, people contacted me. It's a really difficult time right now. I think people are really concerned about tax increases. And what worries me is that if you're in this room tonight or you called one of us, we could explain the, how the building of the bucket works and how it's based on sales tax growth. But I'd be very concerned if we increased it, that people could perceive that as some type of tax increase and maybe misunderstood in the ballot. And so I would, I worry about putting a renewal at risk because there's a misunderstanding about that being a tax increase. And we could come back and go to the voters at a later point in time if we did that six fifty. In two or three years, I think we could go back to the voters and some type of amendment if we needed to.
Or you can, we can. I mean, yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, if we wrote that in, you know, to read, you know, into that, you know, that if we get X amount of years out of the next five years, we, it increases whatever. But I just don't want us to be at a bad event, I guess, five, six, seven, eight, ten years.
There is a dear objective though to keep it as clean as possible so everybody understands it.
It's tough enough for people to understand without complicating it more. But we're just, for all the reasons, you know, that was discussed, I would just thought it was, it's a reasonable request that hopefully the public understands and they'll, they'll continue to support us doing that. And that, and you know, there are other tools we could use also if you've got that major, major project. Obviously, you know, you'd have to do probably a redevelopment project to partner with it in state incentives as well. But I, I'm okay with, you know, I'd rather be guaranteed than, than to not be. But I get the whole thing. I just look at the votes in the past, the people supported what, what the proposal was. So knowing that they were strongly supported that, certain inland rock vote and say, hey, you know, we need, we need to do things differently.
I realize it's a different issue, but we can't ignore, I think, the voter response on the recent school issue where they were asking for some additional allocation. And so I just feel really sensitive to where the community's at in relation to protecting the tax dollars.
And as well as the, kind of the reason that this is a separate public hearing, the plan itself is pretty much the way that it was written previously with the changes being those things that are outlined in blue are highlighted in yellow. And that is the funding table primarily, as well as some of the new language in the state statutes. So it's incorporated in that. And just a other, a couple other housekeeping things. One thing that Matt wanted to also get incorporated was that there were term limits for Quality Growth Fund committee members in standard terms. And so that's spelled out in there as well. By the way, so you've got one really talented, experienced Quality Growth Fund committee that is great sounding for word. And they, I think nobody's ever come and presented something, even if they got turned down, felt bad about it because they helped coach up on the things they needed to do to make success.
Thank you, Gary. Public hearing, does anybody else wish to speak?
Motion closed. No, Gary.
Second.
I now move that we approve of the proposed economic development plan of twenty twenty-one to twenty thirty-one with suggested modification.
Second. That come now or under eleven? I mean, it says, it's a public hearing for the approval. It doesn't say action and action, public hearing and action. That's my question.
That's true. You're right. I just saw approval.
No, no, and I'm not, I'm just trying to say.
I saw approval on my end.
Yeah, the plan has to be modified before you propose to put it on the ballot. That's why it has to have a second.
So we need a withdrawal, right?
The motion was to approval for proposed economic plan, plan twenty twenty-one through thirty-one with suggested modifications with that, including that is the national.
Yeah, I seconded. I thought we would need, we would need to really do that.
No, no, you have to do, you have to modify the plan before you can then present the modified plan to be put on the ballot.
I thought we had voted on the modification of the plan.
That's actually.
This is just the modification.
Next is the plan.
It's the ballot.
So the motion is correct.
So the wording was just wrong in the. That's the lawyer in you, Jeff.
I'm sorry. That motion passes eight, zero. Thank you. Now, we'll move on to item number eleven. And that would be a public hearing in action on the resolution to approve the new North Platte Economic Development Program placed economic development program on November third, twenty twenty, general election ballot.
Close public hearing.
Second.
I now move that we place the LV eight forty Quality Growth Fund Economic Development Plan and its identified funding formula on the November twenty twenty general election ballot.
Second. Item number twelve, public hearing in action on resolution directing that the use of a portion of the local options that are in sales tax through to fund the North Platte Economic Development Program is placed on November third, twenty twenty general election ballot. And this is a public hearing and anyone wishes to speak?
Close public hearing again.
Second. That motion passes.
I now move that we place the LV eight forty Quality Growth Fund Economic Development Plan and its identified funding formula on the November twenty twenty general election ballot.
Second. Motion passes. Item number thirteen, public hearing in action on amendment to the North Platte Nebraska Comprehensive Plan Form eleven. Future land use map to amend certain lands from quasi-public to business transitional and property described as a tract of land in the southeast quarter section, quarter of section sixteen township thirteen north, range thirty west of the six P M. Again, this is a public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak?
Motion, public hearing.
Second. Public hearing be closed.
I now move to adopt recommendation that the city planning commission for approval of an amendment to the North Platte Nebraska Comprehensive Plan to amend certain lands from quasi-public to business transitional and property described as a tract of land in the southeast quarter of section sixteen township thirteen north, range thirty west of the six P M in County Nebraska.
Motion passes. Item number fourteen, public hearing in action adopted ordinance number four zero three seven to rezone certain land from A one transitional agricultural district to R three dwelling district located at forty-one fourteen Victoria Lane on property described as tract of, tract of land in the southwest corner of section sixteen township thirteen north, range thirty west of the six P M. And this is a public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak?
If you have a really quick question, question whenever it's appropriate. This is a question for either Judy or Jerry. Was it, is it just cleaner to take this section into R three versus some type of additional use permit or? Because it's just a small section of that ground, so that's, that's the reason for my question.
There's an existing house there that was there when the applicant purchased the property. So there was a lot of discussion on what she was going to do with that one existing home. There's a lot of work that was put into it to get it to the point where it was. She needed to do some, you know, either decide to tear it down or to go ahead and finish the project that was already started. So she went ahead and finished the house. And so then you've had this one single-family dwelling on this large piece of property. And so it was very, very difficult for her to look at, you know, selling a piece of property with that one house on it. We looked at a couple of different options, rezoning it to, you know, a BT or R one. The R three seemed to fit a little bit better out there because of future plans with that area. There's been some discussion on making it more of a multi-family residential, maybe a mixed use to where you can have some commercial and residential in there. So those zoning options just seem to fit a lot better than trying to just kind of make some no one traditional use or something.
Thank you.
I move to close public hearing.
Second.
I now move that we adopt order number four thousand thirty-seven recommend, I, a recommendation by the city planning commission to rezone certain lands from an A one transitional agricultural district to an R three dwelling district located at forty-one fourteen Victoria Lane on property described as a tract of land in the southeast quarter of section sixteen township thirteen north, range thirty west of the six P M in County Nebraska on first reading. Second.
And that motion passes. Now, item number fifteen, adopt recommendation by the North Platte planning commission for ponderosa first subdivision located at forty one fourteen Victoria Lane.
I move that we adopt recommendation by the city planning commission for approval of ponderosa first subdivision located at forty one fourteen Victoria Lane. Second.
Item number sixteen, sit on board of equalization and improve the assessment schedule for paving district number eight three two on Eugene Avenue from Highway eighty three to Sitting Bull Road, also Sitting Bull Road from Eugene Avenue to Walker Road.
I am moved to have this board of equalization accept the assessment schedule for the paving district number eight three two. Second.
Now, item number seventeen is claims.
Who do pay the claims?
They need to vote.
Don't move.
We still need a vote, gentlemen.
Long and toe. You got one more vote to get out of here.
I know she grabbed mine.
Our batteries are dying.
I thought you had my code control.